From Mr. Cardwell, because I know him pretty well and he can't say much in three minutes or less. But the first one is Jeff Cardwell, from the Gamel Fire Department, and he's here in representation of those members. So, welcome Jeff.
Thank you, sir.
And all the members.
Let me get my license on so I can see a little better here. Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Manager. On August 4th, we had a untimely death of our fire chief, Sam Smith, after a very brief illness. It was a chain of events that we think that may have occurred this, or caused this. We are working it as a line of duty death, and that is a very cumbersome process. And we're not, we're just at very early stages of that. Our reasoning for being here is simple, is to thank county government and all the other departments in the county. August 4th, about 8 o'clock, I got a phone call that indicated that Chief Smith had passed. My second phone call was to Chief DeMonardo of Callahan Emergency Services. Once I went to him, he pledged his support. Over the next five days, the amount of support that we got out of Caldwell County, all of Caldwell County government, I don't want to distinct just one particular part, because, and I will slightly, emergency services, public information, health department, and the sheriff's office, we couldn't have asked for any better support. I mean, basically, if we needed it, they done everything they could. There are members of the emergency services staff that work long hours to make sure that that service that was, yeah, for Chief Smith, was done in an honorable and professional manner. I was really, really pleased with how it come. Just the unwavering of support. You never really understand the brotherhood until you're part of it, or till you experience it. Now, that was my 12th line of duty death that I'd worked throughout my career. But other than one more slightly, that was the only one that was personal. All the rest of them was people, that was acquaintances, and people asked me to come in and be a part of an incident management team. So, our support that we got from the county was just, we couldn't ask for no better. There are also some additionals that I want to thank. Every department in this county, every fire department, every emergency services department reached out to myself, or another one of the chief officers, or other members of the board of directors, and asked, "What can we do for you?" And the support was just unbelievable. So, the support, the brotherhood, all of that truly exists. And I think here shortly you'll hear Chief Smith's son, Alex, almost say the same thing. I want to personally thank North Catawba Fire Department for everything they done over at the cemetery. If any of you recall that day, we had a severe storm, and it rained probably as hard as I've ever seen it rain. And we was out in the middle of it. I want to thank Hudson Fire Department, Little River Fire Department, Grace Chapel Fire Department, and Castle Fire Department for providing support. I don't want to take anything away from any other department, because every one of them reached out. It was almost to the point, gentlemen, that we almost had too much help. We really did. We had so much, you know, we didn't want to just bring people out there just, you know, to stand around. So, we were very pleased with that. As the list goes on down, I want to thank the city of Lenore, because as most of you know, Chief Smith retired from the city of Lenore, as a fire captain. Lenore Police Department, Lenore Fire Department. I had a conversation with Chief Air about this, and he said, "Well, Jeff, how you want to do it?" It's kind of both. I said, "Well, since he is chief here, let us take the lead." And I says, "You can line up in the truck behind us." And that's kind of the way we worked it. The support we got from Lenore Police Department, as far as leading it, and just dealing with the traffic issues at the church. Also, the support that we got at Calvary Baptist Church, from the preacher on down. We really couldn't ask for anything any better. As I go on, North Carolina Emergency Management Western Branch, that's who I retired from in one of my past lives. And I had four people come in that basically, once the funeral started, it was theirs, because I had worked numerous funerals, numerous large funerals with these guys, and I knew they can handle it. And all that guys, it's our turn to grieve. It's our turn to sit in through the audience and listen to the preacher, and listen to the service, and be there for the family. And I couldn't ask for no better support in many, many ways. And the next is Office of State Fire Marshal. One of my second call after I called to talk to Chief DeMonardo was Terry Young from Office of State Fire Marshal. And I says, "I think we could have a line of duty death." And the amount of paperwork that they've helped me with, or helped the department with, ladies and gentlemen, I just couldn't, I just couldn't express my sincere thanks. Right before I move to Alex to talk about on the family, I want to introduce who that I have here. I have Danny Crack, who's a long member, Gamel Fire Department, who is a long member, key board of director. Some of you just a little history about him, his family lived out there for numerous years. Of course, that's Alex Smith, Sam's son, and other assistant chief, Michael Brewer, and also have our president of board of directors with us, Rusty Dillinger, and of course, Captain Greg Bowler. And in the back with us is our treasurer, Tedon Biggerstaff. Chief Brewer has a token of our appreciation for all five councilmen and the county manager. As you know, in the fire service now, handing out coins has become a real big thing. And lastly, before I just slide right into Alex, because I think we were number one speaker, and Alex was number two, and I kind of purposely done this, because I kind of wanted a little more time. Chairman Church, I'm doing pretty good. I'm on time. So, I'm going to, once again, close and thank everybody. Everyone on the county manager down of what he allowed his departments to do, and the help we had. So, Alex.
Well, I guess I'm going to start by mimicking what Chief Cardinal said. Know most of you gentlemen, you know, through the hats I've worn in my career, as most of you know, this was totally unexpected. I just can't thank the county enough for stepping in and not only, this was twofold for me. This was my dad, but we were also connected in our careers. I've said it time and time again, I wish our last conversation wasn't about the fire department, but it was. We'd sat there and talked about the fire department for 45 minutes. So, this was tough, because it's tough when any firefighter dies and we go through those funerals, let alone it was my dad this time. Most of you know that I am very close with most of the admin staff of emergency services, and not only were they there for our entire family professionally, but personally, and I can't thank you enough. In typical fashion, they managed, managed resources, kept everything moving, and we are forever grateful. We are forever grateful for what they've done for our family and emergency services as a whole. There's no, I didn't see a lot of the moving parts. I tried to be involved in typical fashion, and I was told to go and grieve, and be a family member this time. So, I don't want to stand here and try to list, because I'll miss, I'll miss people, but I just want you guys to know, the fire departments in the county, to know organizations that stepped up and helped. We are truly grateful, and we can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
One thing I failed to mention during mine, and it's a different subject, but I want to personally thank each of y'all for allowing us to have the additional $25,000 for ARPA money this year. Rest assured, I think most of y'all's intentions was for it to use to support personnel, and rest assured, it will be at Gamel Fire Department. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys. All right. Good evening, everyone. We call the Board of the Commissioners meeting to order from Monday, September the 12th of 2022. I want to welcome those who are joining us by TV at this time, and again, say welcome to those who are in attendance in our audience here this evening. We appreciate each one being here and being a part of this meeting. At this time, I would ask that Reverend Josh Hughes, a senior pastor of Lenore First Baptist Church, come up, and he's going to lead us in our invocation, and that'll be followed with our pledge of allegiance, and our vice chairman, Mike LaBrosse, will lead us in that. So, welcome Reverend.
May we pray together. Father in heaven, we thank you for the day we've had, and now for the opportunity to do the business of Caldwell County. We ask in the name of Jesus that you give us wisdom and understanding, that you watch over these commissioners and give them discernment as to how best to lead so many people in our area. Father, I pray for all those services that have been mentioned earlier, who look after our county, and who make it such a wonderful place to live. In the name of Jesus, Lord, watch over this meeting. May you be glorified in all that is said and done here. And Lord, grant us your peace to know that we are your beloved children, and you're going to see us through. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Are there any agenda amendments to our agenda this evening?
Chairman and Commissioners, I'd like to remove item four, item for decision amendment to junk nuisance vehicle ordinance to a later date. And then, we have some consent agenda items that have some special guests here that are here to present. So, I would like to have a new item eight to allow Mr. Josh Bennett from Mudd's Architects to present. That'd be moving item, let's see, is that item K to now the new item eight. Then, item nine would be Ms. Deborah Murray to talk about item O, approval of Evergreen Site Development Plan, and to also do item R, which is Project Einstein. We could take all those up at one time. That way, our special guests can check out early if they need to.
All right. Hearing these amendments to our agenda was a pleasure of the board this evening in adopting our agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the county manager has presented.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And our first item on our agenda is some recognition of retirees. And the first one on our list is retired Deputy Sheriff SRO, Jesse Simmons. So, I know Jesse's here. I saw him with his family. So, Jesse, if you'll come up, is, who's from the sheriff's office going?
Major.
Major.
The major's here. Use a sentence slow. I couldn't see you, Major. Sorry.
Looks like he's sitting in his trees.
Invisible. So, I'll let you.
I just want to tell Jesse, I appreciate his professionalism and his dedication, and putting your life in a lot of danger for the citizens of Caldwell County. And I'd also like to thank his wife and family, because anybody in this room that doesn't have a member of their family in law enforcement, you don't know what they go through at night, wondering if your husband or your spouse is going to come home.
Right.
And I just want to tell Jesse, I appreciate it, not only as an officer, but as a friend. And if there's anything I can ever do for you, let me know.
Thank you, Major.
All right. Jesse, you got anything you'd like to say?
I'll just thank y'all for the support I've had throughout all this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So, are we going to move around and make?
I assume you'd want to get a good picture?
Yep. We're going to do a lot of moving tonight.
Okay.
So, as with all good retiree gifts, you get a clock, so you can mark the time. Of course, time doesn't matter to you anymore, because you're retired. You don't have to be at work. But anyway, it's inscribed Jesse Simmons, Deputy Sheriff, SRO, Caldwell County Sheriff's Office, from 7:01 of 2018 to 7:31 of 2022. So, we thank you for your service, Jesse.
Thank you.
I'll let you hold that, and we'll get some pictures. At least you come closer if you want to.
I was doing a lot of zooming.
And I was going to bring your children up. We'll all move out of the way, and get a picture made of the children and the family. Yes. As well. Get my list. Is Stephanie Levins here?
No, he didn't make it.
Okay. And I know that Mitchell Laws is here. Come on up, Mitchell. So, we've got a clock for you this evening, too. Because I know you need it. I'm not going to open yours up.
He's got to keep up the time his wife tells him to be at work.
That's exactly right.
So, how many years did you work at Caldwell County?
24.
24 years.
Yeah, and about a dozen state years.
Yep. So, we appreciate your years of service. All the child support issues you dealt with through those years, I know was numerous. So, we appreciate it. Did you go say something?
I was going to say a few words.
Yeah, well, good. You go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Mitch has served this county for 24 years, and for most of that time, he's been supervising our child support program. And he has helped family and children receive the resources that they need, so that they could live and they could grow, and they could become the individuals that they need to become. And so, we are thankful for Mitch and for the work that he has done. He has served in his community. He is a veteran. And so, we have been, we've appreciated Mitch and all that he has done. He's also just, he's a good person. If there's anything that you need, Mitch is there to help you out. He's a good father, got two great children. He's been a good husband. And so, we will certainly miss him, and we will miss the work that he has done. But we will also miss him as a person, and hopefully, we'll get to see him around, and he'll come around. But just want to say thank you, Mitch, for all that you've done, and for the service that you have rendered to your community. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. I'll let you hold this. We'll go up here and make you pictures. You might can take it out if you want to. Yes, we did have clocks tonight for Mac Reed, eight years at a convenience site, and Carolyn Hamby, a housekeeper. So, we'll get their clocks to them as well. But we appreciate all the years of service that our employees have brought forward and took care of Caldwell County and our residents. And so, we again appreciate each one of our employees. Next, we've got recognition of our deputy sheriff and EMT of the year. So, more recognition here tonight. Irv?
Yes.
Is coming up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Irv Erchell. I'm a post commander of post 29, Dyser Kendall, American Legion Post. And each year, we do a firefighter of the year, police officer of the year, deputy sheriff of the year, and EMT of the year. Yesterday was 9/11, a date that we will always remember. Not only for the damage done and the lives lost, but for those first responders who went forward, went towards the trouble as others ran from it. Those who went up the stairs as others came down. Many paid a price for their efforts, and many were saved by their efforts. One of the pillars of the American Legion stands for is national security. And national security begins with local security, which brings, which comes from the local government and its department and agencies, especially the first responders. I'm sure that it is very difficult for the department heads to select one individual to be honored with an award for that year, when there are so many others worthy. But these recipients are representatives of all of the members of their department. Dyser Kendall Post 29 is honored to be a small part of this presentation by providing the plaques and encouraging participation by the departments, and letting the citizens know what outstanding professionals there are, our first responders who serve us at great, often at great sacrifice. I think I saw Major Bean around here somewhere. Are you representing the sheriff's office?
Aye.
So, I will introduce Major Bean, and he will tell us about the recipient.
We ain't got long enough to tell you about this recipient. How many people in here raise your hands that know him personally? How many of you know he's a hard worker? His current position now, as he's working in the front lobby of the sheriff's office, he takes more reports, incident reports, than the entire patrol division, probably on a daily basis. There's nothing he won't do. You don't have to ask him to do it. He'll just step in and do it. And if we had a whole department of him and Jesse's, we'd be untouchable. This man right here, he deserves everything he's getting now. I thank the world of him. I thank him also for his professionalism. He's not been with us. He spent the majority of his career so far in emergency services, where he excelled there, I believe, as well. But Jason, we just want to say, we're glad to present this to you, and I'm proud to know you. Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Does he want to say anything?
I just want to thank the sheriff's office first of all, for giving me the opportunity to serve with them. I started my career with Caldwell County in 1999 as a paramedic with Caldwell County EMS. And it's brought me through a lot. Caldwell County's been really good to me, to my family, and they were in there for me and my family, thinking that I needed. And I thank Caldwell County for that. And I went to DLET, and still worked as a paramedic, worked night shift, and went to school every day, and built a dream that I wanted to do long ago, when I finally got the opportunity. And I thank EMS as my family, and I thank the sheriff's office as my family, and Caldwell County for giving me this opportunity to serve Caldwell County for this many years.
We wrote all of this here, Patrol Deputy Jason Rosenberg. All right. Jonathan Cook from EMS will come up and.
So, this is Ollie. He's been with us for several years now as a paramedic. Ollie is the definition of a great employee. The sacrifices and dedication he adds to us and the entire department, county department during COVID was unbelievable. Came up and worked numerous days on his days off as being a translator in the EOC, speaking, anybody to call him with COVID questions, right?
Yeah.
He's worked with Health Department hand in hand. He's worked with DSS some. Anytime he's off duty, he gets phone calls all the time to help translate any type of Spanish that we might run into. And he just recently, for all that hard work, was promoted as one of our backup reserve community paramedics as well. And he's going to excel in that. Yeah. This is Captain Matt Shook, he's his supervisor. You have any questions?
It's been an honor to work with Ollie. He truly leads by example. So, all his peers would agree, this is a well-deserved award. And we're proud of it.
I'm trying to not make it as long as Rosie. So, no, years ago, my parents brought me here from Mexico at the age of five. And right after high school, I made the decision that I was going to make the crown. I was going to make sure that all their sacrifice was going to be worth it. You know, they let go of it, and so, everything. And after I got my EMT, I applied absolutely everywhere, and I just felt like I couldn't get anywhere until I saw that God had closed those doors for me, because when I finally knocked on the door of Caldwell County, I got hired in Enset. And that's when I knew that this was my new home, this was where I had to be. And I'm really blessed to be here. So, I thank Bummy. I know if it wasn't for Bummy, I would not have been hired full-time at all. And I thank Shook. Shook's been an amazing leader, and he was one of the reasons that today I am where I'm at. I want to continue to be better. And they're both just great examples of great leadership, and I appreciate it, to be honest, too. And I appreciate it, y'all, too.
I'd like to say something. Sometimes I have a big mouth. And we were the, this young man was working at a fair they had up in front of Yoke Fellow a couple of months ago. And so, he took my blood pressure, and he said his name was Ollie. And so, I said, whoa, my, my father was called Ollie. His name was Oliver, and they called him Ollie. And when I went to work in the store, I was Little Ollie. And he said, no, it's Ollie with an A, A-L-E, or A-L-I. And so, I didn't realize that he was Martin Martinez. And so, there were some other workers there, and I, so I said, well, why don't you go and come to the county commissioners meeting? Because one of your members is going to get EMT of the Year. And I, and I said, I said, Martin Martinez, and he said, hey, that's me. And I said, don't tell him.
Yeah, but I'm surprised when I say it.
We'll step up there and make a photo.
Yes, sir.
Allow us to do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Irv. All right, then, our next item is a presentation of communities and schools. Ms. Debbie Ellers here with us this evening. You bringing backup, Mr. Heineman's coming?
No, I thought backup. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, I want to thank you for your support for, well, we've been here 33 years, we'll start our 34th year in January. And your support is critical to the operations of communities and schools. And we feel blessed that you believe in us, and you've continued to support us all these years. So, you know, last year, we served 495 students, and we're on track to serve about that many again this year. We're still in the three traditional high schools and the four traditional middle schools. And we do a classroom setting in each one of those schools where we provide services to the students in those classrooms, as well as we have students that are not seated in a classroom that just need that social work, front-loaded services, support that we can provide them. And we have the very best staff. We have the best staff that are dedicated to the students and the families here in Caldwell County. They give from their heart. And it takes that in order for us to have made it through these last two and a half years and to get our families through as healthy as we can. It's been, you know, there've been a lot of challenges, a lot of triumphs, and we have done a great job. Those front-loaded services serve the families holistically. You know, a lot of our families don't have all the things they needed. And fortunately or unfortunately, a lot of the COVID funding now is going away. So, we're going to see a rise in our critical needs with our program as far as servicing our children. So, and those needs have been up over the last two and a half years. But as we see those services dissipate, I know that we're going to see an increase this year. A lot of work and diligence from our site coordinators and social workers as we move, as we maneuvered through the COVID last year. We're proud of the fact that we had 95.5% of our students stay in school last year, of the students that we served. That was a real gift for us. It took a lot of hard work, that's why I say we have the very best staff to work with these students. We also had 83% of our students improve or maintain their academic success. There again, that's that constant, making sure the students have gotten their work caught up and that they're not behind if they've been out, that we, we just stay there, stay with them. We know they can be academically successful with our support. And this year, we're in a time of rebuilding for our mentoring program. Two and a half years without being able to have mentors. We weren't able to have mentors back in the school system last year until really about late February, early March. We tried virtual mentoring, that was not successful. It's really hard to build a relationship with a student on a screen. We just don't have that animated gaming that they need when they're on a screen. So, we had to kind of take that back a note, and so, we're in that process of rebuilding. We have about 60 mentors right now, and we're in the process of doing recruitment. We're in the process of doing training with Bernhardt. So, we're really excited there. And we challenge any one of you to become a mentor. We would love to see you in our schools, serving our students. This year, we have already seen two of our high school students who left last year, who decided high school was not the thing for them, return this year. So, our site coordinators are there, they're ready to get them back on board, ready to get them going again. Two may not seem like many, but if we can just keep those who leave coming back, that's a great success for us and for the program, majorly, major success for these kids. Of the CIS senior students that were eligible to graduate this past year, we had 88% graduate. I know that number is lower than what you've seen in past years. We've always been 95 and up. But considering the previous two and a half years, we are proud of that. We are very proud of it, because 100% of the students we serve have some at-risk, some risk factor that could keep them from graduating from high school. So, we're proud that we were able to have 88% of them walk across the stage and receive their diploma. CIS continues to work with our graduating seniors to ensure they have a plan after graduation. We have a great partnership with CCC NTI, and we're working to open doors for these students so that they understand that it really doesn't have to be a four-year education, that they can walk into some of the certificate programs, two-year programs, and really make a very good income right here in this county without leaving or going anywhere else. So, we're working really hard for the students to understand what resources are here in this county. So, what I'm going to do now is I'm going to tell you that we have new programming on the horizon from grants that we've received this year, and those grants are indicated just for programming. I'm also going to tell you that after 19 and a half years, I am stepping down. Mr. Heineman will be our new executive director as of the 26th of September. So, I'm going to turn it over to Keith Heineman.
Just couldn't stay retired, could you?
I didn't get a clock.
You didn't get a clock.
No, but I'd like to start out, Chairman Randy Church, Commissioners Jeff Branch, Michael Bros, Donnie Potter, Robbie Walker, thank you for your, your time this evening. I would like to talk a little bit about our middle and high school programming that we're working on right now. We do have various curriculums that we utilize with our students. One of the most important ones that I feel like is with leadership and character education. Really proud of being able to utilize social media to put some of these kids out there with their teachers and their administrators each month for each character trait. We do that at all seven schools, and they get an award. And actually, a lot of the students in the classes nominate their peers for this award, for that character trait. So, that's, that's an awesome thing, when you can recognize students for positive things that they're doing inside their schools. The other thing that I'd like to share about is our, our opportunity to be able to work with the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teams. We utilize those concepts each month, and those things are done from anything, from being proactive, beginning with the end in mind. But more so than just listing all these things for you, it's actually putting into practice what you preach. So, we're actually trying to go through with these students and give them some stability during their daytime, and also be able to provide them with opportunities to enhance things for employment. I continue to serve right now as the site coordinator as well as South Caldwell High School, because we haven't had one since the first day of school. David Caldwell and I have been able to teach that class each morning and, and work with those youth. And the most important thing that I stress to these young people is that, you know, you're going to graduate, there's no doubt that you're going to graduate. But more importantly, that you're going to have a plan. So, I feel like it's our purpose as an organization to make sure that these students realize that they have a gift in CCC NTI. Anything, if they want to go straight into the workforce, that's great. College is not for everyone, okay? And if they want to get a certification to begin employment, I think that's wonderful. But I think it's opening up those doors and putting those students on that campus and with the people that they're interested in. And we'll be doing that November 29th. So, we like to take our freshmen over there, and we also like to get our, our early grads. Our, we have several, several seniors that are going to be graduating in December, and hopefully, they'll be joining that workforce. We have another partnership that I'll speak of, and that's actually with our seventh graders, how we work with the animal shelter here. And, and I'd like to thank Mr. Gillian for all of his dedication and work with our seventh grade last year, and pet responsibility is a huge thing. And being able to do that and doing projects aligned to that, and then having them present, and then also having them part of the Ag Expo that happened with Caldwell County Schools. And they took on leadership roles to present in that aspect. A big thing with our grants that we wrote is soft skills. We always hear, we hear, we hear, we hear, we hear it. Well, they, you know, it, it's nice to say that, but you need to give people things to work with. So, we, we utilizing the attributes of Jim Kane and his work. He's big on soft skills, and we're able to purchase some products so that our site coordinators can meet with mentors and do hands-on activities with these kids to promote dialogue, being able to express yourself in a positive way, to be able to respect differences of others, and to be able to work on these soft skills that in turn are all part of that plan for these kids once they get out of high school and to go on to the next step. Our other grants include utilization of a shark tank activity that we'll be doing. And when I talk about these activities, I'm not talking about just like one or two lessons. I'm talking about months of work that these students put together. So, it's a huge part of what's happening. We're also experimenting some with a little virtual reality, and giving some kids some opportunities to be able to use some VRs aligned to social studies and science and help out the core teachers in each one of those schools, and correlating that to the standard courses of study. This is the first time in 32 years I have ever worked with a curriculum that's not tested. So, by a state test. So, the accountability's on ourselves, though, right? And that's what I stress with our site coordinators. So, I'm very passionate about the job that we provide our site coordinators with materials, an aligned curriculum, good pacing guides and guidance, and also to not just be there in that office, but to be in that classroom. And I feel like that's very, very important as a member of communities and schools and working and doing our daily work that we do like that. Did I miss anything? I'm sure I did.
Today, we were up at the High Adventure Climbing Tower up near Tweezy. And please go on Facebook and take a look at our kids swinging up there on the ropes. And many of them were very apprehensive about getting up there. We, we've done these types of activities with students for the 19 years that I've worked there. And this particular course, though, lets more kids get on there at one time. They take more responsibility for themselves, and there's more teamwork when they get up there. So, check out Keith Heineman swinging up there, showing his stuff, helping kids.
I don't know if I was showing my stuff as much as I was knocking my knees. But it was really good to spend time with the kids, though, and do those kind of activities. You have a lot of students that need some more self-confidence.
Right.
I, I think each one of us could, could testify to that, that we know of a, a young person that could use those examples. And Bernhardt Foundation was gracious enough to provide the funding. So, we took 17 students today up there, and we're going to take another 28 on Thursday. So, it's just a really, really good opportunity for those kids to experience something that they may never experience before.
And we thank you. We, we thank you for your support. We look forward to, I won't, but Keith looks forward to presenting to you again in spring.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you guys, y'all keep up the great work.
Debbie, thank you for your years of service to communities and schools. I've, I've known you a long time, and, and you've done tremendous work. I know it's just not you, but the whole team, the whole, all the site coordinators. So, thank you very much, because it's, it's probably untelling the, the lives that you have touched.
Well, thank you.
And the impact, yes, the impact that you've had on so many men and, young men and women in our, in our county. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm going to go buy a claw.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, next is an item for decision, and it is an amendment to our racetrack ordinance. So, I'm going to kick that over to our county manager and allow him an opportunity to speak to that just a minute, and what we're trying to do there.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we had a request in favor of this year to look at amending the racetrack ordinance. In lieu of, the current proprietors have been good stewards to the community, have been good to work with, certainly don't have the issues that we've had in the past. And there's a few minor changes, but they do have some impact that we need to discuss. First and foremost, extending the season to the first full weekend in November. That means it'll be able to mark, operate from the first of March all the way through the end of October and into the first full weekend of November, if that weekend happened to be split, or if they had, you know, delays and needed to pick up an extra date. The other big change is, is that we had criminal penalties and civil penalties that had to be modified with the new general statutes and regulations. And so, that was added in there, and you'll see that through all of your ordinances coming up. Part of the process now is anytime we modify an ordinance that has a criminal charge in it, has to be written, read twice before the Commissioners, before it's actually enacted. So, you'll read it once at one meeting and again at another. And then, the next one is, is that they have four applications that can be submitted to us or to the Commissioners, but they can use anytime throughout the year. So, if there's an event that comes up that's, okay, doesn't fall in the normal schedule, we can add those and amend at any time. We've also added in a rain date clause. This summer has been one of the wettest we've seen. Started off with a dry July, and it seems like it's rained every day or every other day since. I know some of us got to get in hay, Commissioner Branch, and it's still going to sit there probably for another week or so before it's going to dry out. So, the same thing affects them, so they can go ahead and submit a schedule that includes rain dates. So, we already have those, so would allow those, allow modification of the schedule under weather conditions. And that's essentially it. There, they can submit three of the four permits for one-day event onlys. And then, if they need to have a three-day event, say, a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, they can tack on one day. Instead of having just a Friday, Saturday, they can have a Thursday practice, a Friday racing event, and a Saturday racing event. And then, all the other rules apply. We did add a provision for if there was a rain event for a three-day weekend to fall on a Sunday, that they could not fire engines before church let out on Sunday. So, I think it's pretty reasonable changes, just to reflect they've been good stewards to the community.
All right. So, I guess I'll call the, do I hear a motion that we approve these amendments as been presented this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for initial adoption of the racetrack ordinance provisions as presented by the county manager, with a confirming vote to be held at the next regular meeting on Monday, October the 10th.
All right, so here in the motion, I'll open it up for discussion, if we have any discussion from the members. Here and none, then, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So, thank you for your work on that. And I know the owners are here this evening, and we appreciate everything you're doing in the community, and appreciate Tri County. And so, we hope this helps you a little bit, and thank you for all that you're doing. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say to Mr. Higgins, I appreciate you meeting with me and hearing out the concerns of the people in the community there. And as I've told you before, we support you. The noise has always been the only issue involved with the racetrack. So, I hope moving forward that we can continue to work together to try to figure out a way to send that noise up instead of out. So, the people down there won't have to hear it as much on the weekends when they're with their families, so.
Yes, sir, we're willing to look at that. Like I say, we're, we're willing to do some studies and look at some sound, some sound measures that can actually help us as far as it going up instead of getting out. And we're, we're really excited to be a part of, of this county. And we want to be a community person, we want to be really involved. And we want to be the good neighbors. We try to get along with all of our neighbors, and we're going to do the right thing at the end. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to say, Chad, and Craig, the first time I mentioned you told me you wanted to be a good steward of the community, and you have done that. You've held your, you've kept your word, and hence why we're doing what we're doing tonight. So, thank you for your investment. So, thank you for your investment here. Thank you for all your hard work out there. Y'all have done a heck of a job with that track. It looks great. You've got great, you know, people, a lot of, a lot of people coming out to watch and we appreciate it.
A lot of out-of-town travel coming in too from racers. Now, I think you're having a pretty good time this weekend there, so.
Hey, I'm Bernard Jr., you were talking about us last week.
Yeah?
Good.
That's good. So, we appreciate all you're doing. All right. Well, we'll move along then to item six, which is introduction to our new animal care ordinance amendments. And Richard Gillis here with our Animal Care Enforcement as our director. And an extensive reading, Richard.
An extensive reading, sure. Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman, Manager. First, I want to give a, a thanks to Abby here. I think she's been overwhelmed with a lot of ordinances from, from all the departments, but I have to give her credit for this PowerPoint. Last week, she had sent me this PowerPoint. She said, "What do you think about this?" I, I didn't ask her or nothing. She just went ahead and created it because she knew the changes. So, I do want to thank Abby for doing that. But as the county manager had, had mentioned just briefly just a second ago about the ordinance's changes, the penalty was one of the, the big pushers for, for this change. But to go through this PowerPoint, there's a couple of definitions added. Adequate environment, this is provisions of a safe and sanitary environment for an animal free of debris, hazards, waste and filth. As you can imagine, some of the, some of the areas that we go into are, are covered with debris and filth and waste and that's just unsanitary environment for an animal to live in. Adequate food, this is just intervals of feeding once a day at least within a 24-hour period. Surprisingly enough, there's a lot of citizens out here that feed their cats or dogs every, every few days. We've encountered that a lot. Adequate water, we know how hot it gets here. There's a lot of times that I know our enforcement guys carry five-gallon buckets of water on their truck because majority of their calls that they go to were dogs with, with no shelter and no water. They're constantly given water. So, I did the, the definition of adequate water. Animal Service Officer was changed from, from Animal Control Officer with our new name, Animal Care Enforcement. We just changed it. The cold weather shelter, it can get cold here in the winter months just like it can get warm in the summer months. So, adding a cold weather shelters, it's a shelter where the temperature is below 32 degrees Fahrenheit. The owner of the animal will provide some type of secondary source of heat, whether that's bed shavings or cedar shavings or a secondary heat lamp or something like that of that nature. A hot weather shelter, it's a shelter that shall be located in a shaded area provided that the animal, provided for the animal when the temperature exceeds 80 degrees. So, if it's 80-plus degrees outside, move the doghouse from in the middle of the sun to a shaded area if possible. Some tax provisions, as I mentioned just a second ago, Animal Control was changed to Animal Care Enforcement. Animal Control Officers changed to Animal Care Enforcement Officer. The penalty revision, it was added in every, every section of the ordinance. The penalty for a, a violation of this section shall be punishable as a class-three misdemeanor and/or a $25 civil penalty. And any person convicted of this violation shall be subject to a punishment as provided in General Statute 144. Each day that the violation continues shall be deemed a separate offense and said violation may also be enforced. One of the ordinance revisions, our, our previous ordinance had said the Health Director and the Board of Health had, were, was to appoint the Dangerous Dog Board. So, we just had some amendments here to, as the Animal Care Enforcement Director or his or her designee, does the appoint, the appointing, we added a couple considerations here for, for members of the board. A, a person that is familiar with animals and works with them on a regular basis. B, a person who is active in animal welfare issues. C, a law enforcement officer and/or D, two citizens at large. And all members of this board shall be citizens of Caldwell County. Here, we just, this right here is a, in the Animal Cruelty Section, subsection B was where we added adequate environment and subsection one is where we added adequate water and cold and hot weather shelters. Some of the ordinance revisions, the nuisances prohibited, our, our previous ordinance had, it was very brief on what a nuisance was. It just said the nuisance is, is an animal that, that you're having issues with. So, I wanted to go in and add examples of what a nuisance was. So, here I added several different items, one through 11. The first one was continuously or frequently roams or is found on the property of another person. We're always getting calls of cats or dogs always on somebody else's property. An animal that turns over garbage containers or removes garbage from a container, damaged gardens, foliage or real personal property of another person, eliminates on a private property without permission of the property owner, walks on or sleeps on automobiles of another person. Six is maintained in an unsanitary condition as to be offensive to sight or smell. Number seven is not confined to a building or secure enclosure while in estrus. Number eight is diseased or dangerous to the health of the public. Number nine chases, snaps at, attacks or otherwise molests pedestrians, cyclists, motor vehicles, motor vehicle passengers, farm stock and domesticated animals and is housed or restrained less than five feet from a public street, road or sidewalk and habitually lures on school grounds for county recreational property. I think this was a little, a little bit more in-depth and explanatory for, for our citizens. This here was the procedures for the complaint. There was several different sections there to file a complaint and we just added, we just summed it up and made it, made it more brief. Dispositions of animals and animal services custody will be as follow. This was added for the destruction or adoption of unrendered animals. So, right now, the state law says that if, if a cat or a dog or anytime a domesticated animal comes in, we have to hold it for 72 hours before we can adopt it, rescue it or humanely euthanize it. I wanted to extend that to 96 hours because we've had several incidences where somebody didn't realize their cat or their dog was, was missing. At the 72-hour mark, we posted the animal up for adoption on Facebook. It's been adopted. Two hours later, the owner was located, but now we're having to call these people that just adopted this cat or this dog, hey, we've actually located the owner. So, to refrain that and, and to keep that from happening, I wanted to add it to 96 hours.
Is that not going to jam up our animal control again? I get more calls from people saying our animal control's full than anything. Say, and they, and you won't come get them because it's full. Is that not going to jam it up more to do that?
I don't think so. I don't, yes, technically, Commissioner Branch, for 24 more hours, we're going to be holding the animal for 24 more hours. But I think it's better to hold an animal for 24 more hours than to give somebody else's animal away to somebody else. I think our, our staff has been working tirelessly on getting animals adopted, getting animals moved. And the bad thing is, is this, this past Saturday, we had an adoption event for cats. Seven cats were adopted. Today, we take in more cats. It's, it's, it's just like the Caldwell County Detention Facility. The more you release, the more that's just coming in. And it's, it's constantly going to be like that. I cannot wait till our, our new shelter opens up. We're going to have a lot more space and we have a lot of, a lot of policies that, that we're going to implement, foster programs, staycations, things of that nature that I think will reduce our animal holding time. But moving on, number one, cats deemed to be feral by Animal Services Director or Designee will be held for a period of 72 hours. For the purpose of this section, feral shall mean a cat that has escaped from a domestic or captive status and is living in the wild as an animal or a cat which has never been domesticated. Feral cats are a huge issue. Our adoption coordinator has reached out to several, several organizations on trying to create a TNR program, on trying to figure out a way that we could take these cats and, and turn them into barn cats, just so we can get some use out of them so we're not having to euthanize an animal. Animals can be reclaimed by owners for fees in accordance with the fee schedule. The owner of the impounded animal shall be entitled to redeem such animal except as provided in this chapter upon the payment of all redemption fees as provided. And upon furnishing proof of ownership, animals cannot be reclaimed without proof of a current rabies vaccine or a rabies vaccine given by our staff. So, if the owner of an animal cannot provide a proof of a rabies vaccine, we'll, we'll conduct a rabies vaccine for the animal, before the animal's released. In addition to this, dogs will need to wear the rabies vaccine tags upon reclaim. This is pursuant to state law. If not reclaimed after 96 hours, stray animals will be made available for additional outcomes, which is adoption, transfer to a rescue organization or humane euthanasia per North Carolina General Statute 19832. Destruction or adoption of unrendered animals, owner surrendered animals with proof of ownership will, will be made available for disposition by the Director of Animal Services or his designee after 24 hours. So, by the, by the law, if somebody surrenders their animal to us, we automatically can go ahead and adopt, rescue or humanely euthanize that animal. But what I have seen and what I have dealt with in the past couple of months that I've been there, I've had several incidences where somebody has come in and provided false proof of ownership of somebody else's dog. And then, we have either a adopted, rescued or euthanized this animal. And then, three days later, somebody has come in and said, "Hey, that was my animal." So, I would, I would like to try to hold on to it just a little bit longer than I, than immediately releasing it for the same reasons as extending the, the same two-hour hold period. And then, there was just some, some minor grammatical areas, errors there that was changed. The penalty, the fees shall be charged in accordance with the schedule of fees adopted by Caldwell County Board of Commissioners as may be amended from time to time. The Director of Caldwell County Animal Care Enforcement shall have the authority to waive fees required by this chapter for special circumstances that may arise. The purpose of this authority is to allow some flexibility within the chapter that normally would require Board of Commissioners approval if a certain situation arises where a fee would be inappropriate or where the waiver of such fee would be in the best interest of the county. A couple incidences that we've had with this situation is the clear the shelter event. I know a few weeks ago, we had, we dropped our reduction of prices from our adoption. We had 27 animals adopted that week. That was, that was great. The following week, we probably had 40 more animals that come in. But it was, it was because of that, that, that had allowed us to do that. And secondly, we've had some instances where it was our fault that an animal was picked up and I didn't want, I don't, I didn't think it was right to charge the owner of the animal for something that, that we did wrong. So, this gives me the availability to, to waive that $15 pickup fee, $10 a day fee, things of that nature. Here, we just changed the Animal Care Enforcement, Animal Care Enforcement, the, yeah, we just changed Animal Care Enforcement. So, here, the, the, the penalty section here, this is, the old ordinance, if we wrote somebody a civil penalty, they had five days, five business days to pay said penalty. So, that could be anywhere from $25 to $75 depending on, on what the fine was and, and how many charges that they were, they were issued for. So, we had situations where people were, were constantly asking, "Hey, I don't get paid to the end of the month. I don't get paid for two more weeks. Is there any way that I can set up a, a timeframe with you?" But I changed it, changed this to 30 days. It gives somebody 30 days to pay the fine. I think that's the best interest of our citizens because sometimes some of us are less fortunate, less fortunate enough to have the funding to, to pay a fine within a couple of days. Here, we just had some subsection lettering change and that's it. Any questions?
All right. Well, we thank you for bringing that this evening and all the work that's gone into that. And I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for initial adoption of the animal ordinance revisions as presented with a confirming vote to be held at the reg, next regular meeting on Monday, October 10th.
All right. Hearing the motion, is there any other discussion or comment?
I just want to commend you, you guys and you and your staff doing this. I know it looks like a lot of work went into it and I know I've told you this privately, but I want to tell you publicly, you've done a heck of a job in getting this department turned around and moving in the right direction. You know, sometimes it's about being the customer service side of what we do and having some passion and, you know, caring about our citizens and trying to manage through the, the process. And so many times, we, we've been so rigid in the way we handle our animal control stuff and it's obvious that you've brought some compassion into the, to, to the agency or the department and you, you brought some customer service which was, you know, greatly needed. So, thank you again for all your hard work and thank your staff as well.
Chairman, I suppose I'm saying, I'd like to thank the staff as well because they're, they're the ones you see behind the scenes, but they're the ones that's really putting in the work. They're doing excellent. They're doing excellent.
Yeah. Well, we don't have anything but good things to say, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all that you're doing. All right, next is our tax administrator, Mr. Josh Engel.
We didn't get a call for a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. We got a motion and I didn't call for the vote. So, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you for reminding me of that. Come on up, Josh. Anytime I see your name, I get nervous.
Uh-oh. Good evening, Commissioners, Manager. Each year, we present the 10-year-old delinquent taxes to you. Per North Carolina General Statute 105378A, these taxes are no longer collectible by enforced collections. For 2012, the total number of real and personal property taxes outstanding is 136,584.83. This is an updated number from this morning. It's decreased on the number that you received in your packet. I'm requesting to the board for a release of these 10-year-old delinquent taxes.
All right. So, hearing Josh's recommendation, I'll entertain a motion that we release these taxes in the amount of 136,584.83. Do I hear somebody say I'll make a motion on that?
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
All right. Any other discussion or comment?
The number's going in the right direction.
Yeah.
Yeah. Josh, once again, you, you've done a fantastic job. Again, I've told you that privately and now that you're out in the public, thank you for, you know, everything you're doing and, you know, we can see a big difference in that department as well from a customer service standpoint, the things you're bringing to the table. So, thank you for all your hard work and thank your staff and keep up the great work.
Thanks, sir. We're blessed with a good staff in tax.
All right. So, Commissioner Wilk came made a motion. Any other discussion or comment? I'll call the question then. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. So, thank you, Josh. Next is our item eight and I will defer, I didn't write down exactly who you said was coming.
Mr. Josh Bennett with Mosley Architect Group. Mosley was one of the firms that put in a proposal for the Emergency Operations Center. But when we got to looking at their history and knowing that we have 100-plus-year-old active courthouse, we said, "Hey, wait a minute. Maybe we ought to look at these guys for the courthouse." So, actually just happenstance, we were able to take a tour of Lincoln County's courthouse, which is now, I think, two months old. We were there when it was three weeks old and they were still just moving in. And able to tour that and Mosley provided a lot of background information for us. I was also able to meet with them at the City County Managers Association in June and then another follow-up meeting, we got to meet with them at the association meeting in August. So, was very impressed with what they're doing in courthouses all across the nation. And they have had some experience with a historic courthouse and what you do. So, we'd like to recommend to the Commissioners to engage them and a courthouse needs study. Now, this is not designing, but this is just simply going through and working with all the interested parties with the committee and deciding what is it we need and then trying to build in a little bit of capacity that we can afford for the future. That building's been there for over 100 years now, probably 130-plus years now. And we'd like to see it last when we're all retired and gone, somebody else can deal with it. But I think, I think it's important for you and the public to see their qualifications before we enter into an agreement with them.
All right. So, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Commissioners, Mr. Manager, thank you all very much for having me. Mr. Duncan, Mr. Harrison have heard us talk about courthouses quite a bit and I appreciate the, the intro, but I, I will start by saying, you know, this week I heard a quote that the Queen had. It was, you know, "Don't, don't take yourself too seriously. None of us have a monopoly on wisdom." So, everything I'm about to show you, say with a bit of humility, we, we have not done Caldwell County's courthouse yet, right? And nobody has. And so, your needs are unique and we're really here for you and that's what we pride ourselves on most of all. I think you're going to see that in the work reflected in the following slides. So, I'll just briefly go through some of our qualifications. So I'll just briefly go through some of our qualifications and experience. Over the last fifteen years, Mosley Architects has, has done approaching a couple hundred courts-related projects, studies, needs assessments, renovations, additions, brand-new courthouses. We've conducted that work from Maryland to South Carolina and into Tennessee. So we have a, a good view of the depth and breadth that's required for courthouse functionality. We also are highly ranked in justice work. I'll, I'll talk about that in a moment. We have over two hundred and sixty professionals, that's architects and engineers in our firm. So it allows us to get a really good deep dive with just our staff, okay? We can bring to bear on your project mechanical, electrical engineers, structural engineers, interior designers, folks to really dig into your building and say, yeah, this is usable. We can carry this forward or no, we really need to replace this if we're going to make this building usable. So we are nationally ranked and justice-focused. We're number four ranked in the nation for justice projects, and that does include courthouses and the like. Some of our other accolades are there. Energy Star Partner of the Year is one we're also very proud of. We have a big focus on energy and energy use reduction in buildings. It's just good business, right? The less energy we use, the less it costs to operate a building, the better that is for the county. Some of our projects here include Rockingham County's Judicial Center. This was a large project that we did for them. This was a, a brand-new facility, justice facility, jail, public safety facility. The Hamblin County Project is under construction in Tennessee now. This is the Lincoln County Courthouse that, that just recently opened. Moore County Courthouse, this is currently under construction. This has a lot of similarities to you all in that they had a road that was nearby that was restricting some of their ability to grow and, and change and adapt. Nash County Courthouse was very successful. They were very concerned about the historical nature of that building, which is why I think it's relevant to you all because you do have a, a facility that was built around nineteen oh nine, I, I think, and then added on to in the nineties. And it is on the National Register of Historic Places. So it, it has a lot of character to it that we want to maintain. Interestingly enough, when they opened this facility, folks came up and they said, you know, wow, what a, what a great old courthouse. We really love it. And we said, actually, that, that's the addition. So we think we, we think we hit it pretty good. Currently in design is the Cleveland County Justice Center. It's a, a very large facility just to the south here. Transylvania County Courthouse, they're still working on what to do with their building, but they think they're going to want to build a new, new courthouse. And this is a, a rendering of what that could potentially look like. Manchester Courts in Richmond, Virginia, I thought, bear a, a big resemblance. This building was built in the eighteen hundreds. It had three additions in the nineteen hundreds, right? And they called us up in early two thousands and they said, what in the world do we do? It's not functional. It has been added on to, added on to, added on to. People were walking the block all around the building, trying to figure out where to get in. There was no security inside. And so through faith, through renovation of this building, we moved all the courts out into trailers, into the parking lot. They conducted court in the parking lot trailers. And we renovated the building and we made it operate like a modern, functional courthouse. And as I was telling Mr. Duncan, when we went in, we pulled down the ceilings and we found this beautiful stained glass window that we were able to, to reuse and repurpose. So modern technology, we, we can, you know, use skylights a lot better than they did in the eighteen hundreds. The quote down there is an architectural critic in, in Richmond, Virginia, who's got a lot of authorship in the area. And he was very complimentary of how we were able to integrate the building. Smith County Courthouse is one I'd, I'd love to take you all to go see because, again, this is a historic courthouse that has a fairly large addition on the rear of it that reconfigured how the courthouse worked. And I think it provides a very strong example of how to deal with a historic facility, downtown location, and, you know, a courthouse that needs upgraded to that new level of functionality. So it is fairly close to you all within a couple of hours. It is over the border, but we'll, we'll let that slide, I hope. Fredericksburg, City of Fredericksburg in Virginia, again, this is another downtown courthouse that took up an entire city block. And then Washington County, again, just inside the Virginia line, this is under construction now, but it was a historic courthouse that we're doing an addition to, to turn it into a modern facility. So these are just a few of the projects that we've recently completed or have ongoing. Any questions about those? I don't want to take up too much of your time. The next few slides here are just about some of the key issues and, and the things that we look for, for in courthouses, right? And some of the big things that we run into are screening, right when you walk through the door. Do we have enough stack space to get people in? Are we keeping our deputies safe while they're screening people and providing them with the room that they need to do their job? Is wayfinding intuitive, right? Not everyone that comes to the courthouse automatically knows where they're going and they probably don't come there every day. So we want to make sure that it serves the citizens. That's the number one point of this building. They can get in, do their business, and get out. Managing security cameras, managing the security office, and then as we've learned over the last couple of years, how do we deal with infectious disease control, right? Especially if we get a, a big court case anymore. If we get a hundred people coming in for a trial, with or without COVID, we need to be conscientious of that. Courtrooms have a lot of issues that they didn't have a hundred years ago or even thirty years ago because of all the technology that we have, right? We're bringing in all the audiovisual, which creates issues with acoustics, and it creates the need for a lot more space because we have a lot more equipment to deal with. When we look at the ergonomics of the judge's bench, much like the bench that you all have here today, the judge has similar issues with people approaching the bench, being able to see the documents that are on, that are on their tabletop, and also the security of that bench. What happens if they have an assailant in the courtroom? How do we get in? How do we get out? How do the deputies respond? Looking at jury accommodations in the lower left-hand corner there, that image, we had just finished this beautiful new courtroom and the judge said, we have a murder trial and it is August twenty twenty. What are we going to do with our jurors? And we went, what do you, what do you mean? You can't have, you can't have all the jurors sitting right next to each other when we're in the throes of COVID. So we actually came up with a separation system that they could install and remove of plexiglass and acrylic panels and a system to move jurors around the courthouse to allow them to be able to manage it. But we've got to look at acoustical isolation for them, make sure they can hear everything that's going on, keep them safe if we do have another pandemic-like event. Holding is critical importance, making sure we have enough, the right type. We're keeping juveniles, men and women all separated. We're delivering them directly to the courtroom without crossing the paths of the judges or the public, and that we're keeping the judges and the public separated as well. And then, of course, making accommodations for the clerk of court. They never seem to have enough space. They get about as much space as I've got here, and then they've got boxes stacked, stacked, stacked next to their desk. So we pay a lot of attention to their needs. So I kind of breezed through that, but I just wanted to say thank you all for, for what I hope will be the opportunity to examine your courthouse, look at your needs, help you understand or plot a path for Caldwell County into the future that is going to serve you guys like Mr. Duncan said, long after we're all gone.
All right. Very well. Well, I, I certainly appreciate your comments here this evening. And as a former bailiff and servant at the courthouse, I, I recognize a lot of these issues that need to be addressed, especially at our courthouse. So, but I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity to start looking at that process and having some folks to help us with that. Because if, if you let me build it, it would be a mess.
Well, and I, I do, did also want to, want to say that one of my first professors in college said, one of the options has to be what happens if we do nothing. So I, I want, want you all to know that when we, we take this very seriously, when we look at a building, it is not, well, how big can we make it? This is about what's right for Caldwell County. What can we do that is effective for you all? And we're going to present you with several options of how we can approach the delivery of justice in Caldwell County. And again, we're appreciative of that. We're sensitive to your needs and we're here to help. So thank you.
And I will say this, I learned this recently, but you're talking about people getting in and out of the courthouse, conducting business, but it's one of the busiest facilities we have in Caldwell County with, I think the average is somewhere around eighty thousand a year darkening the doors of our courthouse in and out. So it's a, a pretty monumental task to be able to get this accomplished and, and hope that we can someday facilitate a new facility and some addition and making it work better for everybody.
Yes, sir.
So, but thank you.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm just a little weary of all architects right now after this mess we've had at the dog pound out here. It's been awful. It's been awful to deal with. It cost us way more money than we ever thought. I'm still upset about it. So are we taking any action on this, Donald, or we're just?
Yes, sir. You'd be authorizing me to enter into contract with Mosley to begin a needs study. And then I would say we're going to appoint an ad hoc committee because there may be members that we need to add that we haven't thought of or people that need to drop out. It will be a flexible group. But essentially, you want Chairman LaBrosse and Mr. Harrison to oversee this. Jimmy's experience as a bailiff, I think, is invaluable. But also adding our, our local judges, our retired judges, as well as Representative Hall, ADA and DA's office, as well as our clerk of court, and certainly the sheriff's office and all the bailiffs being involved in the design of this. I think to Commissioner Branch's point, having the right team up front, thinking about these issues now will save you lots of problems in the future. And this is going to be your biggest capital project in the history of the county to date. It may be your legacy, and we want to get it right.
All right. So do I hear a motion that we allow our county manager to enter into this contract?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we allow our county manager to enter into contract with Mosi, Mosley Architect. What was it called, Donald? Okay. Mosley Architect Firm.
For a needs assessment.
For a needs assessment.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So thank you. Thank you for coming. Where are you from, sir?
I'm, I'm based in Raleigh.
Okay. You going to spend the night in our county?
I'm thinking about it.
I believe I would.
Please do. Please do. Please do. Just, I do have a quick question. What type, what kind of timeline are we talking about from the time you start to the time you present something to us?
We would.
Roughly, I'm not going to hold you to it, obviously.
We look at anywhere between eight and twelve weeks or something of this magnitude. And, and this is, this is light. We, we start pretty light because we don't want, we don't want to go and do a whole bunch of drawings of your building just to turn around and realize, oh, you know, we can't do anything with this part of the facility and we spent all the time drawing it. So I, I believe very heavily in an incremental approach. We want to take a thirty-thousand-foot view and then start zeroing in slowly but surely, keep you all involved, keep you informed, and, and make this a, a steady process that takes its time and allows us to have plenty of time to make decisions. So eight to twelve weeks. But, Mr. Commissioner, if you want to slow down and have a couple more meetings, you just call me.
Got you. So I'm, and you'll find this out, there's a, one of the, one of the issues is, is parking down there. You know, we're having to, we borrow the church parking lot, you know, which is probably not the, the best scenario for us. So I hope that this needs assessment will include the parking issue as well.
Yes, sir. We'll take, we'll take a strong look at that.
Fantastic.
Great. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Next is Ms. Deborah Murray, our EDC Director. And she's coming with a couple of reports. And exciting news, always exciting.
We hope so.
Yes, ma'am.
So this evening, and thank you for hearing these requests, we would, first of all, like to talk about the industrial site development program, which you approved back in, I think, April formally. And we had purchased at the last meeting thirty acres in Saw Mills, and we are now assembling the budget to make that site shovel-ready for industrial development. And we would like to make application to Golden Leaf for a grant that could mean as much as one point five million for all of that site readiness. And we were asking for an authorizing resolution to allow the county manager to sign that application so we can proceed.
All right. Do we have that resolution prepared already or?
Yes, sir. That should be item O in the consent. This would be applying for up to a million and a half dollar match, purchase of the property and partnership with the town of Saw Mills will be accounted toward that.
All right. So do I hear a motion that we enter into that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize the county manager to initiate or, or we, excuse me, make a motion that we authorize a resolution for Evergreen Site Development Grant Application in the North Carolina Gold Leaf Foundation.
All right. Will that cover it?
Took million and a half.
For a million and a half?
Million and a half.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously, too.
Thank you. And if awarded, it's awarded in December of twenty twenty-two, so we could start work with their money in twenty twenty-three.
Very good. All right. And then you were going to speak to item R as well?
Yes, sir. We would, Project Einstein, as you know, is the company that has contracted to purchase the thirty acres that we had available in Lenore. And it continues to grow at a very rapid pace, but as such, it has many moving parts, some of which, as of last week, required some additional time to close. But it is still moving forward. And we need, or the company needs a couple of extra months to make sure that they can close. It could close anytime, but we've asked for three months so we don't have to come back to you again.
All right. So I make a motion then that we allow our county manager and Ms. Murray, whoever the parties are in this, an attorney, to allow Project Einstein the additional time up until December the fifteenth of twenty twenty-two for purchase on the property and, and the extended time for a closing date. Any other comment or discussion on that? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight. Next, we have reached our consent agenda. I'll turn that over to our county manager, Mr. Donald Duncan.
Gentlemen, thank you for your patience. I'll try to be as brief as I can. And also for all the changes to the agenda tonight, we've had just a lot of good opportunities we needed to take advantage of. Item A, reapportment of Robbie Wilkie to the Library Board. Now, the requirements, there's not a commissioner, has to be appointed on that. Robbie's been serving well and continue to do so, and we're seeing significant changes and improvements at our library. Reapportment of Jeff Ranch to the Airport Authority, that's one of our favorite meetings of the month, and you always learn some good stuff there. Reapportment of Brandy Tolbert to, and Crystal Henderson, excuse me, to JCPC Board. Deputy Simmons, the purchase of his duty weapon upon his retirement. Budget amendment increase in crisis intervention program funds. This is for DSS for heating and cooling, the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. Budget amendment for NC Commerce Motorsports Grant. I think that's one of only ten grants issued in the state, and it's the only non-NASCAR-affiliated grant, I believe, to any track. So that's a big win for us and our Council of Governments for helping put that together. They're well underway of securing new lighting and some improvements for the track. Budget amendment, excuse me, I'm sorry, let me back up. Reclassification, item G, of Restructured Water Department. We manage over nine thousand accounts monthly, and we were doing that essentially with two people. And so, and we were missing some things, including some, some very important reports to DEQ that need to be done. And so I think we need to add a position and focus on our, our health and reports into that position and also create the deputy director position over there. So someone's in charge of the office and managing the office and all the folks that are coming and going and being, being better representative to our customer and to our This is a big one. Item H, amendment to the pay plan for detention officers. As you can see on the bar graph supplied by Captain Bailey, we're near the bottom of pay when it comes to detention officers. We're having a retention problem. Our sheriff does a great job with his folks, but we're about thirty percent vacancy in the detention facility. And that is also matches a statewide average. And And that is also matches a statewide average and is a little better than a national average of detention officers. And so, before we have a serious incident in the jail, I'd like to do something to try to improve that. We've worked with Captain Bailey, Lieutenant Morrison, and especially our HR Director Beth Brown to create a career path program. So, detention officer job is not just one step, but it is a full career. But there's also new certification requirements that's been passed by Training and Standards that require us to have more certified jailers. So, that's something I think we need to work forward to, look forward to. And I think our sheriff has done an excellent job with the resources he has. And so, all this does is bring us to mid-pack in the region on base pay. But it also, more importantly, establishes a career there. So, if someone, you know, needs to advance, there's a chance for them to advance, become a corporal, become a sergeant, get their certifications, even get their education and training. And I do appreciate all the Commissioners' work with us on that over the last couple of months. Gamel Fire Department is donating to the county an air trailer. I think we bought that, donated it to someone, and then it's coming back to us for us to maintain. The replacement value on that today is about $160,000 in value.
What's an air trailer?
Air trailer is a cascade system. It's compressed air bottles that we tow to the fire scene and refill air bottles with. It's quite dangerous unless you know, if you don't know what you're doing, you don't know how dangerous it is. Approval of August 8th minutes, we've already taken on Item K. Budget amendment for the Health Department, an amount of almost $1 million, 918,000 for Corona response and relief supplemental funding that came down from the feds. Budget amendment of courthouse phase two. This is an additional $1 million in SCIF grant funding that our General Assembly has appropriated to us for a total of $6.5 million. So, it's very nice of them and generous and we're going to start spending it pretty soon on this needs assessment. Public information advertising increase, as you can see. Page is working diligently to rebrand the county. You see new seals. There's new seals on the outside of the building, water bottles and handouts and things that we're trying to do, even coasters. We're trying to do more and more of our rebranding. And so, we've spent our budget already this year and we'd like to extend that to continue our rebranding and getting some of the newer, fancier seals made and replacing them throughout the multiple buildings. I didn't realize how many we had seals that we've got to produce and it's dozens, more than I estimated. Let's see, we've already taken on Item O. And then, Item P, this is quite important. This is a waterline utility mapping contract with the Council of Governments. Well, they'll bring their staff in and GIS code all of our water lines. We have a layer that is essentially 13 years old. The technology is so old that the data has advanced and data gathering has advanced beyond what our layer has. And it's only partially complete, estimated maybe 50% complete. So, this is a two-year contract. It would be over the course of two years. The first year is $125,000 and the next year, we would budget that in there as well. That's going to be quite important in the upgrades that we're going to see on our GIS system. And also, most of this is in the staff's brain, right? So, if something happens to one of them physically, or they become ill, they leave our employment, God forbid, something bad happens to them, a lot of that institutional knowledge is gone instantly. So, we have got to start building a better data layer to map out and to also build as we expand our water system. And it will help us in applying for grants and low-interest financing. It's something we got to do. There's not much choice. You can draw lines on a digital map, but this will entail, this is this side line. This is the type it's made out of. This is the last time it's repaired. This is the type of valves and the exact GPS locations of those valving, the number of hydrants, flow rates, et cetera, all of that data that allows to make better decisions on our water systems in the future. And then, there's approval for fireworks display at Amity Creek Farms. And I'll try to take any questions and staff is here for any answers, too.
All right, anybody have any questions in reference to the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion that we adopt this evening's consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the county manager has presented.
All right. Again, an opportunity for any questions. Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And that brings us to the end of our meeting. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, I'm going to.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned and we thank you again for being here this evening.
Don't run off, I got a couple of questions.